Good morning. Thank you all for joining us for today's nerdy thirty webinar. We'll be diving into a preview of the upcoming special session and previewing what we all suspect will go on there. It's clear topic for of great interest because we have nearly seventy of you registered for this morning. We're thrilled to have that, and we're also thrilled to have a terrific media panel. James Baragon, Jim Henson, Grover Jeffers, and Harvey Cronberg. And before I turn it over to Jim to moderate this morning's program, a couple of housekeeping. Notes, questions are welcome and encouraged. Please submit your questions anytime using the chat or the Q and A function. We'll get to as many as we can during the discussion. Thank you to our PAT members for supporting our mission. For over twenty years, PAT has been the kind of the bellwether for integrity and professionalism in government and public affairs advocacy. If you're not a member, we'd love to have you join us. And you can find out more about that and a link to join in the chat. So please, please join us. About today's panelists, Jim Henson is Executive Director of the Texas Politics Project at the University of Texas. He's the founding director of the of the project and the Texas Pole and host of the Second Reading Podcast and a professor at the University of Texas in the Government Department. James Baragon is the Capitol Tonight anchor of Spectrum News, which he joined in 2025 after nearly a decade covering Texas politics for the Austin American Statesman. Plus, the Dallas Morning News and the Texas Tribune. Gromer Jeffers, political writer for the Dallas Morning News. He's covered presidential campaigns, written extensively on local, state, and national politics, and well-known around the Capitol. Harvey Cronberg, CEO and publisher of the Quorum Report, and has been covering Texas politics since 1989. With that, I'll turn it over to Jim to kick off this morning's discussion, and thank you for joining us.
Well, so much for the summer lull. Thanks to everybody for being here, our panelists, thanks to all the attendees watching live and later on. Thanks for the generous introduction, Tom, and as always, thanks to Allison Small for hurting us all, which is not easy. So, you know, we're here to, you know, I think ostensibly look mainly at the agenda for the special session, but that intersects, I think inevitably with 2026, which is part of the story, I think. So, you know, we've got these two buckets of things that are intertwined. I kind of want to start with the with the story de jour, redistricting, what the Democratic response is going to be. You know, what we, you know, how, you know, how that changes the terrain here, how it interacts with the other issues that are obviously looming, you know, not the least of which by any means is disaster response, flood relief and the in response to the terrible events of July Fourth weekend. James, I want to kick it off with you and talk about, as our new guy, as the new nerd, I guess, congratulations on that. You know, talk to us a little bit about what the dynamics are looking like around redistricting. You know, obviously, the big chat in the last, to my mind, and the media coverage, reading clips this morning over the last couple of days is, what is the Democratic response going to be? You know, will we see the Democrats respond to the siren song of a quorum break again or not? Which I think is a little much more complicated than it's been in the past. Why don't you kick us off by, you know, picking one of those questions to respond to? You're a much more targeted interviewer than I am.
Sure. Thanks, Jim. It's a pleasure to be here with you guys with such a distinguished panel, so happy to be here. I'm curious about this whole thing because obviously the dynamics are very interesting. You know, the president yesterday said that he thinks with redistricting, the Republicans can pick up five congressional seats in the midterm. I had a couple of guests on my show doing a political analysis segment, one Democrat, one Republican, when I told them that they both kind of chuckled because, you know, redistricting is always political, and Republicans have gotten so good at redrawing these maps to their benefits. So to a certain extent, they have already been drawn, we all thought, to their maximum capacity for Republicans without putting them in very tight competitive seats. Now, what the president wants them to do is open those up again a little bit more and make them just a little bit more competitive, but just enough so that Republicans will still win. And he's thinking five seats. That's a big ask because once you make it a little bit more competitive, especially on a midterm, a wave election year, as you usually get, Democrats can surprise people. I mean, that's what happened in 2018, and Democrats are really counting on a year like 2018 to have some surprises, to have some type of wave. I don't know that it will be a wave, but with the US House so close, the margin so slim, it is a bit of a risk. And even if it doesn't come this year, even if President Trump and the Republicans are able to pull this off, that they somehow draw the Texas maps just right to have a political advantage for Republicans, and they keep the US House, that what is, what happens four years from now, six years from now, as the demographics continue to change? And so that's something that I'm looking out for. The other question, I'll leave it to the other panelists, but I just don't see a quorum break. I just don't see an appetite. We know that Hakeem Jeffers was talking to the House Democrats about using all options on the table, but they just did this in 2021. Some of them did this in 2003, and I think they've learned hard lessons about that. And there's there's fines now for a quorum break. I think I read in the New York Times that it would cost them $15,000 of their own personal money to break quorum. And what's the end game here? I think the governor with the flood, which was a tragic event, has sort of put them in a checkmate situation, which is you have to come to the Capitol to provide flood relief for this devastated area, but you can't have flood relief without congressional redistricting. So a quorum break, I think, is very hard to pull off. And again, what is the end goal? Because the governor can keep calling them back.
Yeah, you know, the end game has always been the question about a quorum break for the minority party, and it's the one that's kind of, you know, hurt Democrats. Gromer, is that you jumping in?
Yeah, I was about to say that he'll just call them back. They now, a lot of times, these quorum break, the appetite gets stronger over time. And say, if it's a couple of days before the end of the session, yeah, that would make more sense, knowing that kind of forcing Abbott to call you back for one more. You made your 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 political statement, then you can move on. And I'm sure the Republicans will be ready for that. But you're right about the appetite and also the leaders now of of the party. You know, you don't have, you know, Jasmine Crockett isn't here to be that sort of one of the engines that she was when they were breaking quorum to fight that elections bill. The situation in 2003 was much different as well. But let me just say, so it will be difficult for a quorum break. But I think Democrats will, and James outlined it perfectly, they will say, you think you can get five seats? Go for it. You know, you think you can draw five districts that can flip from blue to red? Try it. Because I, if Republicans were able to get five seats out of what they have now, I think they would have drawn better maps a few years ago. I don't see it.
Harvey, I know you have a lot of thoughts on this. I want to, you know, I want to just, you know, sort of pull a couple of things out and like what both you guys are saying.
A couple of seats, maybe, but even in a in a year that's looking more favorable for Democrats, this might be really difficult to even get that, but we'll see.
Well, it's funny, my colleague Josh Blank and I were having a little debate about this or nascent debate. We didn't have much time to talk about this over chat. But look, I mean, you bring a couple of things I want to I want to sort of focus on with you, Harvey, is like, one is, you know, I mean, I think the, you know, this desire or this this discussion of who's got an appetite for what here is really interesting to me because, you know, I mean, this is Donald Trump's and national Republicans' voracious appetite here to undo these maps in a way that, you know, this kind of, you know, is hovering beneath both of yours. And you kind of alluded to this, James, that, you know, while the maps and as drawn maximize Republican advantage, as we've said in here before, at least to some degree, it also was designed to quell a lot, to not overreach, and to avoid the situation that Republicans are now being asked by national, in Texas, are now being asked by national Republicans, you know, to follow, which is stretch it a little more, work a little harder, have a few more competitive districts that you've got to fight harder in. And of course, the people that have to do the actual fighting are kind of going, well, why would I want that? You know, and I think we're getting, you know, nobody wants to say anything on the record because, to my mind, these congressional Republicans, you know, are afraid of speaking out against Trump. But it's been reported, you know, usually not for attribution, that there's not a ton of enthusiasm for this even among congressional Republicans, which is utterly understandable when you think about what the second and third order effects are of stretching these maps, which I think we talked about last time we were together. And so there's that piece of where is the appetite? And then the other piece is, you know, that I think both of us, and it just kind of gets us back a little bit to the to the actual operation and the guts of the session. It does seem to me that this idea of how Democrats respond, what potential for resistance they have, is really going to put agenda management and how you sequence these items on the legislative agenda really at the forefront. I mean, as you said, James, I mean, if sure, if they're doing redistricting in the last couple of days and it's been, you know, put off, then that creates the opportunity for you to do a little quorum break, which has the demonstrative, you know, the demonstration effect that, yeah, we're resisting. But then you come back after a few days and, you know, everything's a little more cool. And the fines in the in the new stat, in the new House rules are not as high if you're not gone that long and maybe a little more negotiable. But Harvey, you you are a master of the process and have seen this a lot. And I think this, you know, agenda management thing is kind of right down your alley. That's why I wanted to funnel it, but please give us your take.
Let's get mechanical for a moment. And I'm not, I'm not predicting that they're going to break quorum, but there's a the the environment is somewhat different right now. The first of all, the clock is running. If they were to, even if he called them back two months, that's $2 million of fines towards the Democrats. That's chump change when you're talking about a House majority or a congressional majority. So the financial disincentive, I don't think is is even part of, should be part of the calculation.
Although, isn't it on on them personally?
Personal, yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
I know there are ways around that, and there's a question whether that law is even legal.
And it's a House rule, and if the quorum never, if they never could get a quorum at the very beginning, how do they incorporate House rules? So.
Yeah, but I mean, but that, but that, but Harvey, that goes to James, or initial point that can, the Democrats are walking into a trap if they don't show up in terms of flood relief.
I'm going to, I'm going to contest that just because I'm being contrarian. Right now, the Democratic base is pissed. They're pissed because, I mean, the metaphor is a majority, a minority leader Schumer said he was going to write a very strong letter to the president objecting. That's kind of become the metaphor for democratic passivity. And I I don't know that there's a penalty among, certainly among the Democratic base. Second, if they draw those maps, typically that what they will do is look at the previous presidential election. The presidential election last time had Democrats seriously underperforming, particularly in the areas that that they think that they can win districts or that they can draw new districts. So if they use presidential numbers to redefine those districts, I think they're walking into a trap. The metaphor for that is Lizzie Fletcher in 2018. On paper, she was a twelve-point underdog against John Culberson, and she won. This is going to be a referendum on Trump. Trump is, right now, he's among general audience nationally. And Jim, you can correct me if that's not the case in Texas, but he's been continuously underwater and seems to be increasingly underwater. Now, obviously, that can all change, but he's got more than 50% disapproval rating pretty much across the board. In some cases, it's up to 56%. My my guess or my sense is that there's nothing on that call that that Democrats have to perform for. The the July Fourth floods were, they're already trying to say that the governor is trying to use that as a hostage material for something more political and make that the the governor's problem. That if he wants, if he wants to deal with the floods, that he has to take that off the off the call. I don't know if they're going to, I, the Democrats are chaotic. We had an entire session where they had the possibility of of simply not providing them the two-thirds they needed for constitutional amendments, but they they never had an ask. They never knew what they wanted to get in exchange for giving them the numbers to be able to pass constitutional amendments. So even though there's, I think it's, it would structurally disadvantage Republicans to do redistricting this time, or certainly reach for five seats, even three seats. I I don't think that the Democrats are sufficiently organized to do so. Finally, I will say that the the speaker's relationship with the Democratic Caucus has not been improved after this this last session. He gave them essentially nothing. He gave them as a caucus, some symbolic victories, but nothing substantive. Now, flip side of that is that he has personally reached out and been very accommodating to individual Democrats, and maybe that relationship is enough to sustain them being there. But there really aren't very many incentives for them to participate if if they're going to do violence to essentially what's perceived as minority districts.
Yeah, can I just touch on that?
Yeah, please, yes.
Before we get off redistricting, we're talking about all the logistics and the politics and whether there's going to be a quorum break. But this is, I think it's pretty fair to say this is a purely political move. I mean, there's no reason for this redistricting to be happening. They've already drawn the maps four years ago. It was the very Republicans who are now going to redraw them that drew them in the first place, saying they were race-blind. That was the big quote from Senator Joan Huffman that's being used in the El Paso trial. And so this is purely political. I think that has to be stressed. It's incredibly rare for this to happen. In 2003, this was a big deal when they redrew it mid-decade. And now it's the very Republicans who drew those maps who are saying we need to redraw them again because the Trump administration says so. And the other point I want to make is that, as Harvey alluded to, these are coalition districts. So I think three of them are coalition districts. One of them is a Latino voting district, Sylvia Garcia's in Houston. So this is a further dismantling of the Voting Rights Act of the gains that minority voters have made since the 1960s. And it's a trend that we've seen largely since the Shelby County decision in 2013 and largely based on Chief Justice Roberts's push to sort of get race out of politics or out of, yeah, out of politics and out of redrawing congressional maps. But the end goal, it seems, is going to be taking power away from minority voters who have just come into that power over the last half, half a century. And I think we have to stress that because it's all about the politics. It's all about the politics, but for minority voters, this is hugely important.
And and James, these are situations that probably there would have been an attempt to have some kind of remedy on the front end, as you pointed out. But because pre-clearance requirements or the requirement that you have states like Texas with a history of discrimination have federal approval before election changes and redistricting maps are implemented. That's all gone now. And it's hard to go from, to to say that, yeah, political gerrymandering is okay. Racial gerrymandering is bad when, in order to achieve your political objective, you're going to have to impact voters of color. You just do. I mean, you see it going on in Tarrant County now with a mid-decade redistricting, where they're targeting one district that's a majority of people of color. So, yeah, it's fascinating how the Supreme Court has played a role in all of this, especially since that 2013 decision.
One last, one last thing I would, I would add is that, let's just say they're able to stall this for six to six to eight weeks, for whatever reason. Again, a million dollars is not a a big deal if you're talking about how a congressional majority. That that's.
Unless you have to come out of your own pocket with.
Well, I can gift you 15,000 tomorrow. I really don't think that's a legal, a serious issue, but.
I think there is a question of that, but, you know.
Yeah, but having said that, let's say.
Did you take that chance? Oh, you got it, though, Harvey, so. You got it.
Booming for Harvey. I think you're getting at the deadline question, Harvey, is that where you're going?
Well, yes, we're still litigating the last redistricting matter. Is there anybody that thinks that they can get it through the courts in sixty to ninety days before filing deadline?
Yeah.
Yeah. One last thing, like, ask the the North Texans Congress, Republican congressional Republicans, what they think about tinkering around in the Dallas area when, when they know at some point they're going to have to fight hard anyway because of the natural demographic shifts. And so if you try to mess around with Julie Johnson or what, whatever you want to do, you know, ask like a Beth Van Dyne or somebody like that's close to the urban core, what they think about that. This redistricting at its core is an incumbency protection racket. And both parties are in on that part of it.
Yes.
And both parties, both incumbents from both parties don't want any part of this.
You know, I want to, so I want to pick up a little bit on something Harvey kind of implied there and ask, you know, everybody to kind of weigh in on this. So, but I do, you know, I do want to ask, how much does, you know, the addition of flood warning systems, flood emergency communications, relief money for the Hill Country floods, you know, to use the, and natural disaster preparation, use the language of the the special session call? I mean, how much does this shift the politics of the of the situation? I mean, Harvey, you seem to think that, you know, it's not necessarily an impediment here that the hostage play doesn't really work, if I heard you right. But it strikes me that this does, you know, really raise the attention and the temperature on the session. I mean, look, we know from our polling and virtually everyone else's that, you know, while we're all, our summer's been ruined because there's a special session and we have to pay attention to it and work. You know, for most Texans, only about, you know, habitually fewer than 10% say they're watching the legislative session extremely closely. And I think, given where the the agenda was prior to the the July Fourth floods, I wouldn't have expected much of a break in that pattern. I do wonder now if there's going to be a little bit more attention and if it is going to, you know, how much? And I guess the open question is, how much does it change the political dynamic? James, what do you think?
Well, Harvey, our elder statesman Harvey, seems to think that there is no, that it doesn't have that much impact. So I'll play the role of the young and naive newcomer, which I think it does. I think it does play a role because, you know, obviously, the state and Texans all over the state have been impacted by this, if not directly, just by watching the images on television. And you can never underestimate, I think, in Texas, the skill of Republican messaging and the, whatever the opposite of the word skill is, of Democrats on messaging. They, and the Republicans have so much money and and the bully pulpits to go on television and say, we need you guys to come down for flooding. We need you to come in for flooding. Why aren't you supporting flooding victims? And they've got money to make that hurt in the campaign trail if Democrats don't come. And so, and I haven't seen, and perhaps they're still coming up with this idea, but the counter messaging to that. And I frankly, I don't see what good counter messaging would be to that. Like, how do you say, we don't want to come in to help flood flood relief victims? What I think it also does do, if they end up coming, if there is no quorum break, if the special session does happen, is that the Democrats have an opportunity to do as I think Gromer was suggesting. Take Governor Abbott at his word and say, we're going to put flooding at the top of the agenda and then just hold it there like a like a blocker bill for the 10% of nerds who do watch the legislature. Put flooding at the top of the agenda, work on flooding the whole time, and then the last, and get that passed. And then the last couple of days, break quorum like Gromer said, and get the heck out of there so you don't pass the other bills that you don't want passed. But I do think that they can try to say to the Republicans, Governor Abbott said this is the top of the agenda. This is our top priority. We're focusing on this all session. And I think that's probably the best they can do.
One of the questions that came up in the chat from Allison, that's from the audience, I think, follows up on that, or we can all just follow on that is, you know, but I think it it speaks to your quotable line about the opposite of skill among the Democrats. And the question was, do the Democrats have the organizational capacity, you know, to hang the issue around the governor's neck, saying, look, you've been, you know, you, Governor Abbott, Republicans have been in charge of the state for 20 years. You had the opportunity to address this issue. You failed. And does that incentivize Democrats to maybe hang around and try to turn the screws on that to the extent that they're available, that they can? But I mean, I think the big question, and I was thinking about this in the earlier part of it, is, you know, organizational capacity is exactly the word I would have used. You know, it's one thing to say, and then you kind of got at this, you know, you sort of went in that direction, but kind of did caveat it with this, is that, you know, I, I, I think that's a pretty important question. Gromer, I want to go to you and then to Harvey.
I mean, to some degree, yes, because it, well, organization and then there's messaging. And the messaging is the big part of it. Yeah, how do you get the message to Texas voters that, one, we are here and we stand ready to pass whatever is needed on flood control, warning systems, all of that? I mean, I would get out in front of cameras before the session, the day of the session and say, we're ready to do this, and and here's what we can contribute, and here's what you should do. Let's go, let's do it, you know? And then not to the other stuff like, but this, we don't want this other stuff to get in the way of that. So let's get down, let's, let's roll up our sleeves, let's pass it, let's pass it now immediately. Let's do it and and then move on. And that could be effective, but what you don't want is a situation where you have to defend not being around to take those votes. And that would have national implications too, because there'd be ads made and just because to show Democrats in Texas boosted by national Democrats did not want to respond to the flood. Now, that that would be technically incorrect, but that was, that's what the Republican message would be, right?
Yeah, that's not, that's, that's never stopped anybody on the campaign narrative.
So when you talk about messaging and organization, you're going to try to avoid being in that position. And quite frankly, and you mentioned this before, you you have the unfortunate position to have the governor being able to call you back again and again and again. So how do you avoid, at some point, somebody's going to break, whether it's Whitmire in 2003 or, or, you know, whoever, you know, came back this last time around.
Just a historical note, Whitmire came back because he thought that if they, if he didn't, they would eliminate the two-thirds rule.
Yeah, yeah.
Much for that argument.
So Harvey, what do you, you know, how do you weigh in on this? I mean, I mean, aside from the fact that you're going to help organizational capacity for the Democrats by apparently sending them some cash.
Yes, well, Washington hasn't been particularly effective in impacting Democrats in Texas elections. But November is what, 15 months away? The November election is 15 months away, and you think of Winter Storm Uri, you think of Uvalde, you think of other great crises that we thought were defining at the moment. you think of Uvalde, you think of other great crises that we thought were defining at the moment. And what kind of impact did they have in down ballot races? And I would argue that the down ballot races are na- have all been nationalized right now. And that the, this is episodic, it is not thematic. And it's going to be a, an argument more about Trump and
Yeah.
France have Medicaid cuts, they have, I mean, they have an enormous number of issues as a result of Trump. So again, I, I, I don't, I personally don't think that they're gonna break quorum, but there's, if they could hold it off forty five days, the clock works on their behalf and then they can pass the bills for.
And what, what, and Jim, look at the list. What's Abbott's appetite, for instance, to cut property taxes, the THC stuff, the, 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 the abortion stuff, the human trafficking, protect women's spaces. You know, where are we gonna be back here again anyway? Because of your volume.
List, it's a long.
Well, I think that, you know, that's, that's, you guys are both helping me with the transition that I can also, I can do the transition and answer a question in the chat.
Gromer and I call a segue, Jim.
Good segue, guys. You know, transition as an extra syllable is an academic, I have to go that direction. So James, you spent a year in Harvard, you know what I mean? You know, so one of the early questions is outside of redistricting, flood response and THC. And there's some assume assumptions on THC there, but it's the question, how much of the call do you think, you know, basically to paraphrase the question, you know, was more about, you know, the politics of the agenda that you were kind of implying to some degree there, I think, and Gromer, looking at some of one of those, some, some of that down back, you know, farther down on the list items like, you know, let's just put abortion and essentially trans rights on there to make sure that people feel like they've been paid attention to. In other words, given that read, how much more, you know, what are, the way that I would put that question is, what do they have to do? And how much of the rest of the agenda, you know, is, provides the governor with the opportunity to do what he's done before? At times on the legislature is not doing what he's wanted, which is said, look, I asked him to do it. It's not my fault that they can't get their act together. You know, obviously he's more than willing to do that. So what, you know, what has to be done here? How do we, you know, how are you viewing all, you know, that long list as James was saying?
Blood control, some sort of regulation on THC to at least try to mollify the lieutenant governor and redistricting. Those three, I think you, they have to do.
You guys, what do you?
I think the rest is the campaign platform. Gromer's right, the rest is just simply a political, a, a campaign program. And I don't even think he cares about mollifying the lieutenant governor.
No, he doesn't. But, you know, that's one where.
He's personally enjoying the fact that he's got the trick on the ropes.
I want, I want to look, two things. One, I mean, does this, I mean, look, the THC hemp thing, to me was always kind of a strange, you know, a strange development in Texas politics, which, you know, not that that doesn't ever happen. Does, does the THC thing recede a little bit because of all this?
I'm sorry, say that again, James.
Does the THC hemp subject recede somewhat because of all this? I mean, I was wondering about that, that all, you know, to your point earlier, Harvey, that in the past, you know, in one moment, we have these big things that seem like they are gonna define and dominate. And THC did seem like it was kind of had pride opened something interesting a month ago.
It was the reason for season.
But now, what do you think? I mean, does it kind of?
We were talking about this on the show earlier this week, because I had the exact same question, Jim, great minds. So I, I think, I think THC does recede, I think a lot actually. Because one, the governor now has done what he could have done all, all session and has given clear indications about what he wants, which is raising the age to twenty one. And I think rules on hemp derived products or Gromer, you got the list.
A regulatory regime of some sort.
Regular.
It's just not prohibition.
But he's given clear indications about what he wants. I don't think that there's gonna be that much debate because we know that an all out ban is off the table. And we know a clear outline of what the governor wants now. So the debate around that, I think, probably should recede, but you, you know, who, crazy things happen at the.
Well, it's a question of, you know, just, I think how dug in the lieutenant governor is on this and how much he's willing. You know, look, the lieutenant governor is very good at this, as are many people in that building. You know, letting something recede, but then at one of these crunch moments, you know, reintroducing the issue in a way that reopens negotiations. What do you think, Harvey?
I think that everybody was, well, every, the political universe was stunned at the blowback on the, on the passage of the ban. I know members all, all went home and had to deal with their veterans and their elderly consumers. And if there's a huge consensus to pass the, the twenty one year old ban, I mean, that, that they could put that up the first day in.
Kind of low hanging fruit.
Right. The rest of it, if nothing happens, all that anger, that MAGA anger in particular goes away. I actually think that's one of the few durable issues that could break through in, I don't know about the primary, but certainly in the general election. The polling, and I think even your polling's.
Even ours.
Yes. Well, you know, Basil East did a poll that.
Even disinterested, nonpartisan polling is how I'd like you to phrase that, sir.
Pardon me.
I think we're gonna hear about this again and again, Harvey. He's gonna hold this over your head for quite some.
My embargoes will be two hours after yours.
Can I, can I just weigh in a little bit?
Yeah, please.
The length of the list, as Gromer was alluding to. I mean, I think we should look back at the twenty seventeen list, which I think, which one, which one's longer? This one's got twenty one, the other one had eighteen or, do I have those mixed up?
It was twenty, twenty and twenty.
Twenty and twenty, okay. Well, I, I just think it's, it's so, it's so interesting, like there are, as, as Harvey was saying, there's a lot of campaign fodder on there. Like, we haven't heard a whole lot about bathroom bales or protecting women's spaces from the governor. It's been from the lieutenant governor, from many of the socially hard right conservatives. But now it's, now it's on the call. And so you've got to like throw out the red meat and say, well, if they pass it, it's up to them. If not, I put it on the call. It's a lot of like, just, just coverage, coverage and like the, giving the AG power to prosecute election crimes. Again, I don't think we heard about that from the governor. It was again, the far right who was pushing this in the legislature and now it's, it's on the call. Whether it passes, it's up to the legislature. So I think it's a little bit of just coverage. But I think we all know what he's really interested in, which is flooding, redistricting and the THC, fixing the THC situation.
Right. And, and, and this also, James, could be a way to, to give activists in primaries fodder to run against Republicans who they consider too close to, to the speaker, all of that kind of stuff. You didn't support this, you failed to pass this, all of that. But this also has to be, be said, and it just, it's beginning to drive me crazy, not just because I have to work in the summer, but the spirit of, of Texas, of, of lawmaking in Texas is to have a hundred and forty day session, but every other year. And if necessary, the governor can call a special session. These special sessions are getting ridiculous now. I mean, why not just go ahead and just have them in every year?
And there's a cost to taxpayers, which Harvey said doesn't matter anymore, but, but we have to point it out.
Right. I mean, it's just, it's getting ridiculous now that you have a special session with all of these agenda items. When Texas used to pride itself on, we only have to do one thing and that's pass a budget. And if we, that's, and if we don't get anything else done in a hundred and forty days, you gotta go back to your farms and your ranches or whatever, you know.
Well, the, the unfix and anachronism of the Texas constitution, you know, comes up again and again. And even, you know, especially actually in these panels. Harvey, yeah?
I was just gonna say that this is gonna be one of the most boring Republican primary session, down ballot, primary sessions, particularly in the House. Because Speaker Burrows was able to navigate the promise of Trump endorsements for voucher votes. But they weren't forthcoming. Apparently he went to DC and had a conversation in the White House. Said, we'll do redistricting, as I am told secondhand, in exchange for those endorsements. Pretty much every Republican incumbent has now been endorsed by Donald Trump, which means that clears the field. The folks that are gonna suffer the most are gonna be the political consultants who are gonna be twiddling their thumbs this primary because who, who is going to challenge a Republican House member that has been endorsed by Donald Trump? That's hard to imagine. So that argument's kind of over. Gives everybody a lot more freedom of movement and certainly assures the Speaker of his reelection.
Yeah, our, our absent, makes them sound dead. Our, our not attending comrade today, Brad Johnson had a good kind of commentary on that in his newsletter and column today that, you know, basically it's just crickets down ballot in Republican legislative races when you look at the fundraising numbers. And I would say so far, but that's kind of another aspect of the special session, right? That, again, this notion that the end of the day, people are really doing things they don't want to do here in the sense that, at least in the abstract, that I'm not predicting this happens. But, you know, when you bring people back to into session for special sessions, you potentially create exposure. I mean, if you're a member and you wind up on the wrong side of something in a public way, what should have been escaped, all of a sudden gins up a challenger, right? And so I think that's another dimension in which people are just going, are just really being forced to do things they don't want. Now, we are talking to Pat, before we run out of time, it would be malpractice to not work into this discussion, you know, among these items, it's not on the must pass, but it does seem like it's something that is gonna get another shot. And in this environment, may have a better chance. And that's the, you know, the ban on, you know, government entity lobbying. I'm trying to not use the, you know, because I am a nonpartisan pollster. The heavily pollable term taxpayer funded lobbying, but I, how do you guys sense the, the lay of the land is for that? It seems to me it's got a, you know, with a narrowed agenda, however big this is, it's still narrower than a regular session, that you increase the chances of it passing by putting it on the call.
The only battleground is the House. The Senate does what it's told, so.
Right, yeah.
And I, I still don't see much appetite in, in the House for that.
It would have passed during the session, the regular, right? It would have passed during the regular. Yeah.
That's one of those items too, that the governor said nothing about it the entire session. And suddenly it's got a new life, but, you know, crazy things happen when the legislature is in session. I, I agree with Gromer and Harvey that obviously the, the Senate passed it right away and it was moving. But then in the House, it just kind of went nowhere. But, I mean, again, a reminder that this is one of the things that former Speaker Bonin had promised, then Representative Mays Middleton was gonna happen next session. If, if, if he came back as speaker, obviously he didn't. And, and Dustin Burrows was part of that whole mess with the recording. And so he's, I mean, it's not like he's super opposed to this ban. And so that's why I always like to point out that caveat. But yeah, I mean, no, no motion on it during the, the regular session, does that? I, I just don't see what changes to Harvey and Gromer's point. What changes?
One thing that has changed.
List of priorities.
One thing that has changed that undermines it is the role of the counties in disaster prevention.
Yes.
And disaster mitigation. And with this, this, everybody understands this is just an effort to silence the counties and local governments. And I think if anything, there's less, less desire to silence the counties in the light of the disaster mitigation and, and prevention than there was previously. I don't know that that's determinative in any form or fashion, but this has really raised the role of places like Kerr County, who for years has been asking for, asking the legislature, along with the rest of the rural counties, for minor land use, rulemaking authority to prevent development taking place in, in, in the path of natural disasters.
Okay, I, I want to pivot into the last little bit on, on twenty twenty six, even though I would argue that implicitly this whole discussion has been about twenty twenty six. But with that said, you know, one final, like, you know, what, what's the sleeper thing going on in the special session? We haven't talked about kind of a lightning round for each one of you. Right, Harvey, I'm gonna take that as you want some time to think. James?
Yeah, I need some time, just like Harvey. I don't know what the sleeper situation is here.
The real question is, what is Burrows gonna put his political, if he's gonna put his political capital behind, what do you think?
Yeah, it doesn't even have to be a bill. What's the, you know, what's the factor we haven't talked about? And that's a good one.
Here's what I'll say.
Okay, go ahead, James.
In terms of, in terms of, one thing that is kind of going under the radar in terms of the disaster response to the flood is a comparison to Uvalde, which Senator Roland Gutierrez made a, a, a big item, which is the lack of cell phone service in rural Texas. And we knew that was an issue at the school shooting in Uvalde. Now there are questions about whether cell service and cell signal played a role in people not getting those NWS alerts and other types of alerts in Kerr County. So I think that's something that I don't think they're going to talk about, but that I think they should probably be talking about.
And, and could, and you know, and look, flood emergency communications is an item. So it's gonna come up in that discussion. Harvey, you had thought of something?
Oh, I'd love to see a battle over mephisteron. That'd be an interesting floor debate. But other than that, I, I.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a bill filed.
Yeah, we might have that discussion, right?
No, I think, I think you're gonna get that probably, maybe not a floor discussion, but yeah, you, interesting.
See if it gets referred.
I pay close attention to the, to the Speaker of the House, Dustin Burrows. I think this is just a prelude. There, there's gonna at least be another special session, maybe, maybe another after that. See, we'll see how he tries to protect his members from tough votes, from the noise, from, from getting into situations that will hurt them in, in twenty twenty six and beyond. So pay attention to how he maneuvers the House during what will be the first of probably a couple of special sessions.
That raises an interesting question because I hadn't even thought of that, but the criticism of Burrows was that he deferred, he essentially handed the speakership off in a lot of ways to Dan Patrick. That session is over. He got praised by Patrick. He's gotten the, the presidential endorsement as he began to assert some independence that we didn't see in the regular session.
And James, if Democrats, you're absolutely right about smaller counties and the needs like cellphone service. There are others, there's other stuff as well. We've already talked about rural hospital. I know most Democrats are in the urban areas, but if they can come up with a, a plan for small town Texas, man, that would go a long way. And, but we'll see.
All right, Gromer, I want to use, I wanna, I want to use, stick with you for the transition to twenty twenty six. I think that's actually a good point that I, I'm containing myself to not stretch that discussion out more. You wrote a column last week on, kind of the, that focused in part on what the Democrats were gonna do in twenty twenty six. The various gatherings, confabs, discussions, speculation among the growing cluster of Democrats seeming to aim at the low hanging fruit of the twenty twenty six of the US Senate seat. But also trying to figure out whether, you know, what, 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 and whether there, whether there could be a strategy to spread some of that out among more races or not, or what is gonna happen. So give us a little sense of, of those discussions and what your reporting tells us about that.
Yeah, you know, I, I wrote something a few weeks ago about this fascinating May thirty first meeting between Beto O'Rourke, Colin Allred, James Talarico and Joaquin Castro about, hey, let's, let's figure out a statewide slate. The problem was that all of them wanted to run for Senate. You know, because they think Paxton is gonna be cornered and there's an opportunity there.
And we should note that was pre divorce.
Yeah, exactly. But I, I gotta tell you that the, the fascinating thing is, we probably get a, a Senate, competitive Senate primary on a Democratic side, but because Colin Allred is already in. It looks like James Talarico is really gearing up to run for, for Senate as well. And I think that would be a fascinating race. You know, we'll see what Joaquin Castro and Beto O'Rourke does. But I think there. But I think there you have a a demo- democratic primary there, and then we'll see. Nathan Johnson, the state senator from Dallas, announced for AG a couple of days ago. Uh, and we'll see what happens there, and Vicky Goodwin is running for lieutenant governor, uh, the House member. But the problem is, who's running for for governor, right?
Oh, yeah, that.
Yeah, and maybe the former San Antonio mayor, but you you just have a situation where you may have Abbott with a a a weak opponent again, or no opponent. And then he'll have all his resources available to help the rest of the ticket, so that's the situation on the Democratic side. Everybody wants to run for Senate. How do you fill out the uh, the the rest of the ticket? And I think a fascinating race for, in a Senate primary, that could determine the direction of the party.
Uh, my kudos, my kudos to James, uh, his interview with Colin Allred. He gave Colin Allred, what, about ten minutes to uh to try and say what he would do differently this time? And he couldn't, which is ac- actually echoed in a number of private conversations I've heard about, where that's the core question, you know, the.
He's been out there uh a few, the past week or so, lobbying and and other places, he's got a big event in Dallas. He's, he's been hitting the trail, but James, that is right, and and that is the key question for him is.
Republicans successfully branded Democrats as the party of boys and girls sports. Kristi Kradic has already incorporated that into her comptroller's race, uh, primary. Uh, who knows why that's relevant to being a, uh, the state's accountant, but uh, um, that's that, that's the core issue is, uh, can, let's just say, looking in the camera and saying, all children are God's children is not a response to boys and girls sports.
James, between, you know, both on-camera and off-camera, how, you know, since you, your, your Allred interview has been flagged, what'd you, what'd you come away with that interview thinking?
Yeah, I think that he, he, I mean, to to Harvey and Gromer's point, I think that um he obviously wants to run again. He thinks that he deserves another bite at the apple. He thinks that the presidential really buried him. Because Kamala Harris ran thirteen points, I think he was at eight, eight points, nine points.
Right.
In 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 political reporting, anything above an eight, that's a landslide. And do you want a person who ran, who lost by a landslide, running again? His argument is, we couldn't do any better because of the presidential, which was their argument during the campaign. If if Kamala Harris keeps it within five, we've got a shot at this. The question is, I I do think that we're all talking about this, the political atmosphere is changed. But I think people's perception of Colin Allred has also changed. Uh, he has lost this big, major race, and so people are, I think, rightfully asking the question, what will you do differently? And he hasn't really, in my interview with him, he didn't really give a clear answer of what exactly he would do differently. He said he's got more time, he's not in Congress, so that's one thing. But time is is only one thing. Your messaging, as we talked about, has to get better. I think if if he works on that, there there could be improvement there. But he's also got to contend with other very qualified candidates who might hop in the race.
You know, I have two interesting thing, I mean, two things I wanna spin off that and then kind of expand, but, you know, one, I mean, I think Allred really typifies a real dilemma that the Democrats have, which is, you know, their candidate recruitment is uneven. And then you have a lot of candidates that, you know, a history of candidates that run statewide, learn the ropes, and then don't run again, right? And so on one hand, you wanna tell people, look, the candidate, you gotta hang in there. But on the other hand, when they run again and they lose badly, it's kind of hard to hang in there, right? Because the bloom is off the rose, and you got a problem, so there's that.
It's like the kid throws the toy away, right? I don't want that toy anymore.
Yeah, right, no matter, no matter what you do, you know, and to be fair to the Democrats who were just, you know, kicking the hell out of here, I mean, you know, that is a very, that's a very difficult dilemma, because you can, you know, and you can play both sides of that very easily in the public debate, and frankly, in the media coverage, which is, oh, come on, hang in there, learn the experience, run again, and the guy runs again, and you're like, old news, you know? The loss last time, I really don't wanna hear from them, let's, you know, how about a Castro brother, right? Um, so there's that whole weird dynamic that the Democrats are saddled with, which is part of their structural position. And the other piece, you know, which I think does bring us a little bit to the Republican side of this race, we're running out of time, is also this. Um, you know, what is the guiding model here? Clearly, as came up earlier, Josh and I were talking about it this morning. If you're kind of looking at twenty-twenty-six through the frame of twenty-twenty-four, whether it's redistricting or candidate selection or public opinion, whatever, you know, you're making a mistake, and it's kind of a rookie mistake. So what you're left with is, you know, is twenty-twenty-six gonna be twenty-eighteen again, which is obviously an incredibly seductive model if you're a Democrat, right? Or if you're looking for more competition, or from the media perspective, if you're looking for, you know, a less pre-written story about, you know, what seems, you know, like the most likely outcome, which is Republicans hold on. So I think, you know, Democrats were, you know, trying to figure this out, and that twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-six comparison just looms so large in everybody's assumptions here. And in this, you know, very, you know, in this changing environment, it's just hard to know how good a comparison that is. Okay, so look, how, you know, talk a little bit about, before we run out of time, this ought to be a lightning round for you guys, sorry. Uh, all the action going on on the Republican side, uh, how much does the divorce change the context of the Senate race, has to be the, I think, the point question of that? Because the changes in the Senate race on the Republican side are gonna ripple down the ballot.
We'll just have to see over time, uh, can can Cornyn use that to chip away at Paxton's base, especially among Christian conservatives? But right now, I see little evidence of that happening. Race hasn't fundamentally changed. Paxton is still uh leading the pack there, and Cornyn has to really, really hunker down and fight hard to pull this out.
Attacking Paxton morally and ethically is probably not a winning strategy. Uh, I'm not sure how you can raise this negative, since everything's pretty much out there. Although Cornyn will run a lot of TV commercials relitigating the impeachment. Uh, but the the divorce uh by itself, um, if the proceedings are gonna be sealed, which apparently they are, then uh, um, the it, the, the story's probably already had its maximum effect.
Yeah, I I wanna wait for the next not, uh, disinterested, nonpartisan poll to tell me how it's changed. Uh, but I think that, I agree with these guys, like, um, people knew this about Paxton, they knew about his uh moral issues, the divorce. I think the one thing that was interesting and could have been changing was the, the, that sort of delicious-for-us tweet from Senator Paxton, recent discoveries, and everybody, of course, wanted to know what those recent discoveries were. But if the divorce records are sealed, we are not gonna be finding out much more, and so maybe that uh cycle has already passed. And if you look at social media, a lot of the response to that was actually backlash against Senator Paxton, not Attorney General Paxton, and so I think we're, we're down the same line.
Yeah.
You have to chip away over time and hope that at some point, uh, the, the primary voter says, uh,
Yeah, you need more of those recent discoveries, was there, realities, what, what exactly was it, you know, but, but we, it doesn't look like we're gonna find out.
Little noticed, uh, was uh Senator Cornyn's tweet the next day after, after uh Senator Paxton's uh tweet. Uh, it was he and his wife celebrating their fortieth or forty-third wedding anniversary.
I think we're gonna see a lot of that, and I I think that.
Let's pay attention, let's see what he does ultimately, whether there's room for him to get in.
I promised Allison a heart, everybody a heart out at eleven, you guys, great discussion, thank you very much. Uh, a lot more we could have gotten to, Allison, I'm gonna throw it back to you in case you have a final comments question.
All right, James.
Exactly. And hey, Gromer, Monty was not happy with you speaking multiple special sessions into.
Yeah.
There, so.
I, I know.
Uh, but thank you all so much, this is, this is great, and we'll send the articles that you've mentioned out with our follow-up email. And we are working on several upcoming events, so look for those um in your email box, but appreciate it, everybody.
Thanks, everyone, thank you.
You, thanks.
We'll be back after the fourth special session.
You're gonna get in trouble, Gromer.
You're just trolling now, sir.
Exactly.
Bye, y'all.